So being seven o'clock, I'm going to open, um, begin our meeting. Just go over here to the, uh, the. So we're, we're working on a continued public hearing for, um, KMN Properties LLC's site plan. Um, is the plumbing and heating proprietary.
All right, um, I'm Peter with Burton Engineering. Um, a couple of minor changes since the last time, um, we added a holding tank for any floor drains in the building. Changed the parking spaces from eight and a half to nine feet. And then some minor drainage changes, um, which might give us a clean letter on. Um, there was two outstanding things, which was the color, um, material color, which would be something along coagulable or some earth, earth and tone. And then mass DOT, we haven't gotten that, or heard about mass DOT. Talked to them today, they said they may have something to us as soon as next week, but we don't have it. So I think at this point, we'd like to get approval with condition that mass DOT approves it. If there's any change, come back, can't wait approval.
May I do anything that we should set the place wrong?
No, I think we've, um, yeah, the engineering areas addressed all the comments. Just ask Rockland, you know, the issue about DOT curb cut. This board has seen projects like that before, there's been questions about the curb cuts and it's generally been handled, handled as a condition. Thought they'll have to come back if DOT has a different opinion on what curb cut should be versus what was approved. So that will be, the board is entertaining that condition now because it's, it might be important to put it down the path.
Peter, I have a question. If you have to close that easterly curb cut, DOT doesn't allow you to, to cuts.
That one, yeah.
Where would we put the handicap parking? Because that feels to be very convenient if you access it from that easterly curb.
All right, it would probably have to go somewhere along this side of the building.
In the back?
Since that's where the sidewalk is, yeah. Yeah, I guess they'd just have to leave the fence open for, for customers. He, he doesn't anticipate it to be customer parking, they don't really handle walking customers.
But you still leave handicap spaces.
Right, so there would be an accessible space in the rear for the sidewalk to go around.
Does that work, Mike? Can you put handicap spaces in the back of the building and then?
They'll have to be nearest to the accessible entrance, which, um, are the building right now?
Yeah.
They would still be nearest because they'll, they'll have some other sizes.
And I, I mean, they could use that elevator door. There's only, you know, one floor, so they can make that back door the accessible entrance.
Okay. Uh, what kind of landscaping are you proposing for this site?
We have six trees on the front, um, and the rest would be grass, um, those trees.
Are those tall shade tech trees or are they more, more the other trees?
And I believe they were, I don't have it with me, red maples and something else, I fish meat and shadecakes. There are mixed up, some cloves and serviceberries.
A serviceberry is more of a shrub? Or is that more of a?
Cupillo is a tree, I can tell you that, so it's very, yes.
So it's a bulbous algae.
I think it's, I think the serviceberry is a smaller tree, but it's still a shade tree, it's not, it's not.
Are you proposing a building sign?
Uh, we have one written for you.
That's a standing sign?
Yeah, it was compliant with the, uh, the site.
So this, the trees wouldn't interfere with visibility of the sign?
No.
And then on the, the westerly curb cut, you're combining that with the bulk within?
That's correct, so they would need some kind of maintenance agreement to fix that.
Do you have something like that now?
We don't, um, I guess we would condition that maybe.
Do you know how that curb cut got onto your property with the bulk within?
Yeah, so I guess it was still, I think it was still one property when the park was in.
Oh, I see.
Was permitted and then they broke this lot off. And I'm assuming to get the frontage, that little section had to go to this property, so they may be.
How does the traffic flow between the two properties then?
Two, what do you mean?
Well, are there any conflicts with cars, you know, coming up to the one curb cut from the two different properties?
Um, we have a stop sign right here, so if two cars are coming at the same time, from, from our property, they'd stop.
Does that work, Mike, as a contingency?
The whole world will be both traffic generators.
Okay. Well, the other question was, um, the DOT Route 20 plan, they're showing, uh, drain is based on that site. Do you know what the status of that is at the moment?
I don't, um, they were supposed to get back to me and today they're going to get back to me next week, so I'm not sure what, what they're doing with that.
So they would have to compensate you if they were deciding to keep it that way?
Correct, yeah, the property on, yeah.
Property on, and then would that affect the ability to develop that site?
Yeah, because they would just be able to take it in fee.
Would that affect your site plan though, if they put that in there?
Yeah, I think the whole entire project would be rescaled, yeah. Because where they had the basin was pretty much where the building is and it's, from the little sketch that they did, it's a pretty considerable sized basin.
That's all here.
Questions before? Questions from the public?
Can I come up to you close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, we make motion, we, uh, we approve the site plan?
Standing condition?
Yep, and then with that big response to be, uh, from master DOT, well, let's know what it, that is, and adjustments need to be made.
Yeah. Any other conditions?
Do you have any other questions that we need to ask?
Oh, the maintenance agreement, I think, between the two properties for the common driveway.
Deal?
In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Start early or late, I guess.
The or continued public hearing for Curtis Hill Estates, the, uh, reduced frontage lots.
Yes. Good evening, uh, members of the board. George Curitz, I'm an attorney in West Boylston. I represent Curtis Hill Estates, the applicant for the special permit application for, uh, reduced frontage lots in a common driveway. You may recall, we were here several months ago, um, just a little quick update as to what's happened in the, in the meanwhile. The plans have been reconfigured. You may recall that the original plan, um, show very minimal lots, five, five acres, minimal lot with a whole bunch of back land that had still been reserved by the applicant. They had, uh, tons of land back there which could be, um, applied to make these lots large lots. So each of these lots have been reconfigured with the land available, so that the lots are no longer minimum five acre lots. We have, uh, lots that are eight acres, eight, this is actually the, the, uh, the plan. We have an eight acre lot, a twenty acre lot, and a, another eight acre lots, where they're a little bit larger than the original minimal five acre lots. Frontage is lodging still the same, the fifty feet, fifty feet, seventy-five feet, which are the frontage areas that, that's over the fifty feet, uh, required for the reduced frontage by law. The, um, the application still provide, proposes, uh, a division of the area, although it's a much larger tract of area, um, into three lots. And it calls still for a common driveway to service, uh, these two lots, A and B. So that's, this driveway comes up and we service those two lots. The required area of upland versus wetland has been calculated and that's shown on the plan. So we, we met those criteria. We hope that everything, it, it, since we've been, uh, here last, we also had the wetlands flat, we've been to Concom. Concom has delineated, delineated the wetlands, they've issued an order of delineation, recorded, actually was recorded this morning. That's been completed, so that, uh, based on the wetland configuration that's been determined, we'll be able to, uh, we were able to then put the proposed construction activities, uh, on the lot. With the environmental concerns also being addressed at that point. Orders and conditions will be required relative to the, uh, driveway and the house construction. So we'll be going back to Concom, uh, if the planning board approves the special permits as we apply. I understand, and this is based on a document that I've just received, uh, there's still an issue as to access. What is exactly the access strip? There is language in the bylaw that talks about access strip. So I know I had given an opinion either a year ago, I know I've given another opinion back several months ago on this. Our take on this is, when we read the bylaw, we read it together, we read all the provisions together, so that they can make sense. And we know that the bylaw requires that the house be set at least two hundred feet from the road. And that the access strip portion of the lot be less than six hundred feet. So when you read those together, to, at least the way that I read it, it makes sense is that the house has to be at least two hundred feet from the road, but really no more than six hundred feet. Because you can't access, they don't want, the purpose of having a limited or a maximum length of access is you don't want to have the house twelve hundred feet deep into the lot. At that point, we have a safety issue, there's a maximum length of the, of the driveway that, and that's going to be six hundred feet. So we've provided that the, that the driveways, uh, well below the six hundred feet length, that the, uh, access to the house, the house are all at least two hundred feet deep, but no deeper than six hundred feet. And that the access portion of the lot, and that's the way the bylaw reads, the access portion of the lot, the access strip portion of the lot, not more than six hundred feet. We believe that refers to the access, obviously to the house, because the, because the lot is, it's, it's not as though we have the access back here, um, where there's no house. It's access to the structure that's being built under the special permit. So in, in this case, we're providing access portion of the lots, less than six hundred feet. In fact, in this case, it's, it's just a little over two hundred feet, uh, which is also above the minimum required by the bylaw. So we hope that this satisfies the board's concerns, um, this has all been, uh, it's been submitted, we do have Concom approval on this. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Uh, but we are looking for a three lot special permit to have reduced frontage lots A, B, and C, all exceeding the minimum requirement. Setback further by law, access less than six hundred feet, and a common driveway to service A and B. Any questions? Take your time, sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, for the board, there is also a letter from Kurt Meskis.
Yeah, something along that. Thank you. Yes, all this, you see, it's, you got to do a cross replication in this area.
Right there?
Yes. So, yeah, how could this be considered access? The way that, uh, in this letter, this, the way the bylaw reads, you have a six hundred foot strip.
Sure, sure.
You have six hundred feet, then it has to open up to the minimum.
Sure, if you're considering this, I think like one hundred seventy-five feet, five, this really isn't a lot.
It's, it's like, well, actually on this, they actually opened up why I have the, yeah.
This is where the, this is, this is, then it knows how to get it to get.
Yeah.
Has to, and like, give us, kind of, so we can go over the.
Bill, what's required for contiguous upland for, for a lot? Two-thirds?
Two-thirds of the minimum lot area.
So what does lot C, what does lot C have for a contiguous upland for, for lot C?
It is one point two eight acres.
So the minimum lot size is sixty thousand square feet, so two-thirds of that is forty thousand, just a little less than an acre.
Much like the board, I'm just reading this letter from Kurt Meskis too. So for my part, um, you know, I had a couple outstanding comments, um, I think the one that maybe warrants discussion is fifteen. Um, and that's with regard to the grading of the driveway, where it crosses the wetland. The grading shows the driveway is basically at the same elevation as the wetland, meaning there's no cross culvert, there's no connection of the water to pass under the driveway. This revised plan does show that there's now a cross culvert over Spencer Road that flows onto the site. So there's some drainage area and flow that comes, um, under Old Spencer Road, off Old Spencer Road, through the wetland, and into larger wetland in the rear, um, that would need to pass by that driveway. And it's, you know, it's not standard engineering practice to have that flow go over the driveway, so there should be some sort of culvert there. The plan doesn't show that at this point. Now, they do need to go back before Concom for construction of that lot, including the driveway, so it could be addressed at that point as well. It would need to be addressed at that point, at that lot, as well, but I just make that, that point to the board now. As it stands right now, I don't believe that could be constructed that way.
Bear in mind, this is just opening up, the, this is a special permit just for the construction. Obviously, we'd have to apply for, um, permits from the Concom in order to do this. And that kind of, that kind of issue would be addressed at Concom for construction. We anticipate that's where we would be bringing that.
Bill, is it normal for the pond to be included a square foot as for a lot?
You can.
The water of the pond?
Yes, they own the pond, which they do.
Do you own all the frontage on the pond? It doesn't look like they do.
Their frontage is off of Old Spencer Road through the sign. Pete, do you have any, any things to say about the pond?
We own the pond, yes, we have one, yeah. And, um, we were just, they're subdividing it into the lots. There was a comment made back in the last, one of the last submissions, there was nineteen acres that were left over. So we just decided that whether, rather than leave them over, we would just include them into the lots, and that's what we did.
So from the building commissioner's letter, we sort of have a difference of opinion in terms of what constitutes the access strip. And the building commissioner, who is also the zoning enforcement officer, believes that the access strip is that portion of, of the corridor from the road into the lot, where it opens up to the minimum frontage, which is a hundred and seventy-five feet. So lot B, which is the middle lot here, he has a green line which shows where the lot opens up, two hundred and seventy-five feet. And that is less than six hundred feet from the road as shown by the red line. So the building commissioner believes that lot B qualifies. Lot A, he believes does not qualify because the lot does not open up to one hundred and seventy-five feet within a six hundred foot distance from the road. So his opinion is that B and C qualify, but lot A does not qualify. Now, he also goes on to say in his paragraph, that begins a weak argument could be made, that the length of six hundred feet is to the home, which is the opinion that George is giving. But Kurt disagrees with that, and he says that the premise of this portion of the bylaw, wanted to regulate the access length to the home, that, that would have been written into the language. So, so that's the difference of opinion, that I think you have to sort of determine which interpretation of the bylaw makes sense. Whether you believe Kurt is correct in terms of that access strip is that portion which is less than one hundred and seventy-five feet, or whether you would believe, or adhere to George's, um, interpretation that it's where, it's where the home goes, uh, that's the governing factor.
I suggested the, the bylaw does say the access strip portion of the lot, so we are dealing with a portion of the lot. When you take, I mean, the fact is, it's also, I mean, bear in mind that it's talking about access strip. So it's, it's not saying that, um, you know, where it opens up, that language, that interpretation, Kurt's, is nowhere actually spelled out in there. So, I mean, one of the problems is there is a lack of definition. Uh, we don't know exactly what access strip portion, how that's defined. So when we look at this, you say, well, what's the access to? You know, it's not to the, because, because there would be one theory, right, you could say, well, that means that the whole lot can't have a depth of more than six hundred feet, because if I'm accessing any portion of the lot, that's over six hundred feet, then, then it would be over, then that access strip portion exceeds six hundred feet. So it's not, you know, it can't be to, um, to the back of the lot, because otherwise you'd be limiting this thing, you can't have lots deeper than six hundred feet. And that's not the, the, um, the interpret, that's never been the interpretation. As far as it opening up, it's got to be, if, if, the bylaw still hasn't changed relative to what the building setbacks are from the property lines, et cetera. So once the, once the area becomes buildable, not when it opens up to one seventy-five, but where it becomes buildable, and in this case, for lot A, it's buildable at that area, the building envelope is satisfied. So I can do that on, show that on this portion. There is a building, there is an envelope of this lot that is buildable within the, um, the setbacks required by the bylaw. So at this point, everything in front of that is access strip. That's where it now becomes, um, so this is access strip to where it, to where the lot becomes buildable under the other dimensional requirements of the bylaw. That's at least what our position is, if it's more than six hundred feet deep, if he says the access strip is to this back portion, which is not going to be built on under this plan, then you're really limiting the depth of the lot to six hundred feet. And that's not what the intention of the bylaw is. Could have a hundred acre lot, um, you would be able to, you have to access the back of it, but you can't say that we're not trying to limit the deep, the depth of these lots. What you're trying to do is limit the depth to the house. And then you look at that, what's the rationale behind it? The real rationale behind it is that we limit the length of the driveway for safety purposes. We don't want to have a run more than six hundred feet to a house. And that's really the way, when we look at this, our, our run is shorter than six hundred feet. It's in this area, and this is where the lot opens up to, uh, to provide for a building envelope that meets your bylaws. That's the reason why the lot's been designed this way.
So I don't think I agree with you. You know, if you look at it, it doesn't say where the house is. What makes this lot a buildable lot is that large portion of land. Without that large portion of land, it's not a buildable lot, so the access would be to that part that opens up, that, that gives you enough land to create this reduced frontage lot. That's the way that I see it, otherwise you're going to have all these little tiny landing strips all over town that go off into the woods, but have just these little small building lots. So I don't think that was the intention of the law, I don't think that's intention of the law at all. My opinion is probably closer what Kurt, Kurt has for that one. Because without that bulbous area, it's not a buildable lot.
Yes, I mean, I, I am playing with Kurt, but let's listen to, let's just listen to some of Butter's comments and see what he has thinking.
Thank you.
Comments? Um, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Michael Daniels, I'm a butter to the property that we've been speaking about, and I think you all remember who I am, I've been up. So we've got a, another revised plan, and maybe even another revised plan, and another revised plan. This is now, and it's kind of news to me, so I've done the best I can with what I've got. And so, as Mr. Curitz, he had said, uh, you know, the intent of the bylaw, um, in my opinion, is there to protect us as well as it is for, you know, growth as well. I don't want to hinder growth, that's not what I'm here to say, and I'm not here to say not in my backyard, because I know everybody, you know, basically says that. But you've got these convoluted lots, and you're really trying to fit them in a, in an unbuildable area. I don't believe that was the intent of the bylaw. I don't, I, I think the plans were drawn up to meet these, these requirements, uh, so you've seen these changes. You know, a couple of the changes that were made was this plot line, you know, this, this land didn't miraculously change. Didn't change overnight, and it's still the same property with the same wetland issues, uh, which really wasn't even addressed. And then when you talk about a common driveway going through wetlands, that's another big, big problem that, in the short time I've had to take a look at this, um, I believe there's an alternative, um, alternative qual, alternative analysis in reference to... When you, when you propose a common driveway like he's done here, and you're going to disrupt this wetland, you, you can't go wherever you want to go. You have to go where there's the least impact on the environment. And the way I see it, and again, no attorney, I'm surely no, if you don't mind. I've delineated the wetlands with a magic marker, just in realizing that, you know, this is coming through here, but in essence, the thinnest part, and the impact on the environment in reference to why you would have that, would be here. So why would you come in with a driveway here and disrupt this? The other, I know they flagged it, and I know Todd has been out there, and the conservation committee, et cetera, has been out there, and this has been so-called flagged. But, you know, you guys are a planning board, I think if all of us went out there right now and looked at it, and we, we walked out here, I don't know how this is miraculously. I don't know how this is miraculously dry. It's a miracle. But I guess on this particular planning right now, it is. And then this right here, this delineation, is where the proposed, what you would do is a, you know, if you redo the wetland. So he's, he's proposed, he's going to, he's going to disrupt this, but he's going to put it here, right? So then I'm looking at it, and I'm saying to myself, wait, all of this, this was bought in a big parcel. He built houses down the road, disrupted a bunch of wetlands. And from what I've researched in the immediate time I've had, is that you can't disrupt more than five thousand square feet of wetland. So right now, he's proposed.
Yeah, we, that's conservation, so our, we're all about zoning.
Okay, well, either way, then, then that's, that's an issue. I know the angle of the driveway was an issue, which I just saw the brand-new proposal now that I guess they've, they've changed this angle a little bit. But that was, that was another major issue in reference to coming off of Old Spencer Road. But again, you know, these, these properties haven't changed. Frankly, the proposed house here is closer to my pool than my own home.
Where are you sitting at?
Right here.
Is that you?
Yep.
What's the grade between your lot and the proposed house?
Bill, I couldn't tell you. I mean, speaking as a layman, it's above me.
So that's above you, okay.
Right, so, and that's where they talk about the uplands, the proposed uplands per lot that you're going to get here. And then you've got, you know, obviously you've got wells and septic systems and so forth. And then obviously, there's a culvert that they've marked here that goes right across Old Spencer Road. And that's live. This gets fed constantly. This is a wet area. That's not going to change. And as you disrupt it more and more, issues will happen, whether it's back onto my property, back onto somebody else's property, et cetera. Just... And I think Mr. Clay had mentioned in reference to, and I know Mr. Curitzie had said something to the effect that you don't want to put the house, you can't get out here. It's, it's, you would have, the wetlands aren't just wetlands, like you, they're a hundred feet, it's as big as this room in five or ten feet deep. So in essence, you can't even access this. So where do you put your pool? Where do you put your swing set? Where do you, I don't know. They're, they're really non-conforming lots. And frankly, I've got a conforming lot. My neighbor down the street's got a conforming lot. Guy across the street's got a conforming lot. So why in the world would we have three non-conforming lots in a row? I, I wouldn't understand that.
Well, Kurt's saying that two are acceptable, so.
I would respectfully disagree, but if he says they're, and I think he's basing that assessment on the one hundred and seventy-five width.
Dimensional. Dimensional-wise, they meet the criteria.
Right, so they drew it up to meet it.
Right, but the other thing is, is conservation needs to determine, and the specialists determine on whether they comply with the wetlands setback as well as the uplands.
So if that's the case, then you still can't put, where is the impact on the alternative analysis in reference to going across the wetlands?
That'd be conservation.
Okay.
We only have so much jurisdiction in that, in that, we just.
Well, understandable, but the jurisdiction falls into the fact that you're trying to put, you put, you're trying to put three houses in a one-house lot. He's got a hundred and seventy-five feet of road frontage here. You could put one house out here, and you could be, you could be, but you're frankly fitting ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. Yeah, I think I covered this, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have other comments?
Can I?
Go ahead.
A clean layer from Curtis Hill states, the one thing, we, we took into consideration Kurt Meskis' issues last time. Basically, it was a fifty-foot-wide strip on each one of the lots to access, what he called, access the back of the lots. We disagreed then. So one of the reasons why we reconfigured everything was so that we could satisfy Kurt. Well, that can still be done with Lot A. If he, but the one seventy-five was never mentioned until I saw his letter about half an hour ago. So, I mean, I can, you know, do another A and A plan that opens up to one hundred and seventy-five feet, and then still have the same here, here, and here. To do that, if the board would require that, I will, you know, I would happily go back and just reconfigure Lot A and B and C to meet his criteria. I didn't know that criteria before. When I brought this back, I assumed that we had taken all of his comments into consideration, all of Mike's comments into consideration, and fix it to where it would be acceptable.
You didn't get a copy of the November eight letter?
I just got it about ten minutes ago.
I could get it ten minutes ago.
So I didn't have a chance to, an opportunity, I mean, it's, I mean, I took a quick look at it. Just a quick look says that I can, I can fix it to meet that criteria, if that's what you prefer. We do really believe that the word portion is the access portion of the lot. I know, you know, there's disagreement, and it can be interpreted in any way. But if there's a criteria that helps meet Mr. Meskis' concerns and make it at one hundred and seventy-five feet wide where it opens up to that, and call that the end of the access, then I'm, I'm happy to fix the plan to do that, if you would give me the opportunity to do that. I mean, I think, I'm fairly certain that that can be done. And I know that we've addressed at least each of Mike's comments, with the exception of number fifteen, as he read here before, which we, we, again, could take care of that. You'd have to do that within CONCOM anyway, so it could be conditioned to do that. So if it's your preference, I can go back and I can fix that to meet the criteria that Mr. Meskis has asked for. If not, if we interpret that as the access portion, I mean, the house isn't going to go in any different spot. It's just going to, the lot line's going to change a little bit, and that lot line's going to change a little bit. Everything will fit fine. So I just, so my, you know, comment to you guys is if you want me to fix that to meet the new criteria that he's set forth, I'm happy to do that.
To me, it feels like we're trying to fit three lots where two fit more comfortably. And of course, that, business-wise, you want to do that. But if Kurt says that they can meet all of the zoning bylaws, and they get fifty lots, and then, but we want them to come back and have Kurt review it and make sure that he's.
I still question the access portion. Needing a boat to access your lot doesn't seem like it's a buildable lot to me. So we're stretching this one. I understand two lots, maybe. Three lots seems, seems really, really like a stretch.
I feel like they're trying to fit three, I mean, that two will fit more comfortably and make it.
Yep, yep, to maximize whatever they can out of it. It just, it doesn't seem like a good buildable lot to me. And to put three of them together, it doesn't really show a hardship. It's, it's more of, yeah, maximizing what potential you can get at the detriment to, to our neighborhoods.
I just, I'm always uncomfortable when, when Kurt looks at something like this, and it means all of the guy, and they can get three. I'm not, I don't, I never want to limit somebody from selling out the house lot. It's not, that's not what we're here for. We just need to make sure that everything makes sense. I'd be happy to have a, continue to get in them and have Kurt review them, or whatever, however anybody else feels.
This is, we've been, we've been looking at this for nine months now, and it doesn't seem to be getting much better at all.
Well, it's getting slowly.
Slowly better. Would you consider two lots?
I would consider it. I would like to, I mean, in my, in my defense, I mean, obviously, it's, I do this for a living, so I try to get as, you know, when you pay, as much as I paid for that piece of land, I try to get as many lots out of it as I can. And the reason, you know, there's criteria set forth by you guys in that if I can meet the criteria, I can satisfy Kurt, I can satisfy Mike, and everybody's happy. I mean, I'd prefer to get the three, but, I mean, I'd obviously consider the two. But if, if you guys would just let me try to make Curtis happy, and if he is, then the three lots meet the criteria, why not have three instead of two? And from my, you know, from my side of things.
So even, even Lot B, the width, the one seventy-five, what, isn't perpendicular to, to the lot line? It's at an angle. And if it was perpendicular, it would be past, partially past that six-hundred-foot line. So that's even questionable at that point. And if you're going to make that worse by reconfiguring the lines, then.
Well, the, the house is kind of set so that they kind of go with the road.
No, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the lot. I don't, the, the house, where the house goes is, is material to dividing these lots up. It's the access portion to the majority of the lot that makes it a leaded lot. So I'm, I'm looking at this sheet here. I don't know if, but if you look, if you look at this, I don't know why that line was drawn that way. But if you look at it.
Also, I did by drawing it this way, was just trying.
I'm looking at this here. You may not have. See, where he's drawing the one seventy-five.
Oh, yeah, I don't have it.
Yeah, done it itself.
If we could maybe continue it, and I know you've been looking at it for a while, but like I said, I've been trying to get it so that it meets everybody and makes everybody happy. Maybe some discussion with Bill, some discussion with Curtis, and maybe we could. And just so that everybody understands, this started with Alan. And when Alan and I and everybody, Kurt had disagreed then, but Alan had thought that the old plan was fine. So I didn't, you know, it's not like I came in here with anything that I've been, you know, trying to pull any bastards or anything like that. I mean, I, I spent actually years with Alan on that. So I'm just, you know, trying to make a living, I guess, is where I'm at. And I'm not, you know, trying to fit three pounds of crap in a one-pound bag either. I'm just trying to, you know, get what I thought the bylaw was written as.
I mean, I could feel much more comfortable if Kurt says everything looks good before we, I mean, I, I mean, personally, I think that you're trying to fit three on the two. But you're the, you're the, you own the land, and you want to fit three houses. And if you can do it with our bylaws, it's, it's much easier for us to see that Kurt says you're, you're, you're following all the rules to get it, to get it happening. So I don't know, we have to, do we want to continue this and move on? What do we, what do we want to do from here?
When did we reopen the public hearing? Back in March?
I think so, yeah.
It's been a while.
January.
January. It's been almost a year that we've been reasking the same plan. I'll leave it up to you. I, you keep asking the public to come back here and voice their opinion, and it doesn't seem to be getting to a point where I'd be happy with it. Like I said, two lots I'd feel more comfortable with. Three is, is, seems like he's stretching, yeah.
If I may, you know, and maybe that's the way the conversation turns. That's why continuous is probably necessary. I hate, I hate to keep coming back too. So I agree, but I think maybe that's where continuous may be necessary, and some discussion, some more discussion with Bill and Kurt. And that's where it ends up, the two lots, it ends up the two lots.
If we vote to not, can you reapply, or?
You just hit, um.
If we vote to not approve this plan that's in front of us now?
I think there's a two-year waiting period if you deny it.
Yeah, I don't want to have to do that.
If I could, if I could, George Curitzie, maybe just one month. If we can't convince Kurt with a sit-down, with, and with his letter that we just got, you know, we might, we probably took the ground, we thought we had addressed his concerns. We didn't, because he re-raised those concerns. Give us a month. If we can't convince him, we'll be back with two. But if we can convince him, then.
Can we move to Kurt, make it, if they can't make it happy?
Bill, does it affect the public's hearing as far as even the notice, the way it was written, as opposed to going for a three-reduced frontage as opposed to two?
No, it's the same, same thing.
It's going to need to be January, I think.
September, December.
I want to get it done fast, so. No, have them given touch with Kurt next week?
Yep.
And next week's a short week. It's only Monday, Tuesday this week. And I understand that. But if they want this to work, they need to get in touch with Kurt. And Kurt, well, that doesn't give Kurt any time to, um.
Move it to the first January meeting? And just, yeah, leave, and that way they, there's almost, there's more than a month to get it all done complete and make everybody happy, and come back and get it done. If you can, at least that. No?
How many meetings we have in December, too?
Well, we should have a few.
Well, we're going to probably, we did.
You know what? Maybe not. We need a decision by June. If they can't come up with something, we'll put it December.
Is it fifth of December, two?
Of what day?
The fifth of December.
That's fine.
I think we can.
As long as Kurt's available, I'm available.
That gets us past the short weeks in November.
Yep.
And I don't want to see this go into January.
Thank you.
Me either. I'm with you.
Okay.
You guys can figure it out if you need to do two.
Yeah, if we do two.
If you can't get it done by, by our meeting on the fifth of December, then it's a no-go.
You got it?
Yep, fair enough.
Thank you.
Raise your hand.
Can you clarify that in reference to what's going to happen on December?
Between now and our December fifth.
So we, we're going to, if we just deny it, then nothing can happen for two more years. And it's just, that's a, that's a tough thing to, to do. So we'll, we'll continue this to December fifth. And if we can't figure out what's going to happen, we either approve it or deny it.
It's going to be, if they and Kurt have to come up with a plan, that means all of Kurt's requirements.
And the bylaws.
In the bylaws, present it to us on December fifth. If it doesn't fly, it's a dead issue.
And that might end up being where it's two lots if they can't work out with three lots.
Right, if they can't work with three lots. It'll go down to two lots, and maybe it'll only be one lot.
I mean, if push came to shove, we could combine A and B. And then that's one lot, two lot, you know. I think it would be better to make it, you know, make it a little different, but we'll deal with Kurt.
You guys can work together and come back and.
Yep.
I'd like to make the motion to continue the public hearing on the summer fifth.
Second?
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I agree. Mark, continue the public hearing for Luna Meadows Solar.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Chris Nolan from the Data Group for Sun and Bin, solar development, the applicant. I don't want to, I know we've been here three times already, I've described the project to the board three times. I'm just going to move right to what I think the remaining issue was, which was in this low spot here on our access road. We have a new house right here being built by Jason Dubois, who's, I think, known to the board. And I think the main issue that was, he was concerned that there was going to be some stormwater from this low spot that would come across here, and his, his septic, his leach field is back here. So he has a septic pipe that runs down along here in this bank. So he was concerned about that. So we've made some changes. We have a proposed twelve-inch reinforced concrete culvert beneath the access road, flared end, riprap apron, and a grass swale to try to control that. What that, what that would do would stop any of the stormwater that's above the access road from coming through the access road and picking up sediment. And the other, the other items will break the flow and keep it from turning into a channelized flow as it goes down the hill. I didn't want to change the plans. I did speak with Mr. Dubois last week when I was here. He had looked at the plan. He suggested adding a level spreader. I prepared actually a, I didn't want to do another set of plans and bring them in and have to redo them. So I actually prepared a proposed supplemental condition, which I'd given to Mr. Mr. Scanlon, that would have us install that level spreader as part of the approval. And I, I think Mike has some minor comment about some. And I, I think Mike has some minor comment about some stone along that downhill side in addition to that. But at this point, I think I'll, I'll turn it over to the board for questions or...
So I did have a few remaining, I'd say, minor comments that I can recall. It's gonna require one more revision, whether it's pre or post-approval. It's up to you. Comment number, um, six A on the, uh, the basins on the site, um, three or four basins. Require a little bit of regrading to show that the bottoms will drain towards the outlet. That's, it may seem like a big item, which really not. It's just a minor regrading. And the other comment, well, I guess, I missed the last meeting, so I would, I'm not sure if there was a discussion about the proposed landscaping that they're, they're proposing that that, was that discussed?
Yes.
The trees?
No comment on that. Mostly along the entrance on, on both sides. I bet you that, because I think some of those plantings need to be relocated. Some are shown in some proposed swales. Obviously, we don't want trees interfering with the drainage, so we may have to shift some of those around. But, um, and the new comment I had was sixteen regarding the drainage on the driveway. I went out again and looked at that new construction lot and the way that lot is graded and put together versus where I think the driveway's gonna be for this site. I did have a comment on the, uh, outfall of that proposed culvert. And I'm happy to see that we're gonna be implementing a level spreader there. I think that's a good idea. I did have one other suggestion, which I mentioned to Mr. Nolan before the meeting, along the down gradient side of the driveway from basically the, uh, I'm sorry, the street is...
I think we were talking about from the edge of the apron.
Rock circuit road, yeah, in about 300 feet, um, to basically have a, like a rock shoulder or stone shoulder, a foot or two off the edge of the driveway to collect and slow some of that runoff before it goes down the slope. Might be a lot of property that would, that would be beneficial as well. So I think they agree that they can make that work. So those were the remaining issues I had. I can certainly answer your questions, but hasn't...
Mike, are you happy with this proposed alternative?
I, I did read this before. I think that's fine.
Do we have any question? How many butters present?
The other issue, just to remind you, we have the scenic perm, we have the site plan review. We have the scenic road special permit. We also, is Seth here, um, Lamansky? Because we also have the tree hearing. I did invite him. Mr. Lamansky's not here. I guess I'll have to, I'll have to track him down myself.
Yeah, that's not a, a planning board issue. The public shea trees, the scenic group, is a special permit on the planning room.
We had agreed...
Right, we had agreed.
To consolidate them or to keep them together, but...
Yes, that they reuse the stones as, put them, you know, in the driveway location.
Yeah, the stone wall is just gonna be, be taken out of here and soon to be reconstructed down along, right along the edge. So it'll just curve in instead of going across the front of the driveway.
Yes, sir.
Ralph Fisk, North Sterling Road. Uh, what do you, and I can't see that, that's all right. Plans for maintenance around that whole project? Because you get in the back there, there's absolutely no access to the, to where you are other than your road. So if there's a fire runoff to maintain, there's no way to get back there to fix that.
We designed the access road and we've gotten, gotten assent, I think, from the fire department. We've met the requirements for access for the, um, and I can't see it, I didn't expect it. But we have a, a hard turnaround here and we have access all the way down into the back from this gravel access road. This is just the northern part. I, I blew this up because this was really the issue.
Around the fancy area.
Pardon me?
Around the whole, the whole solar fire.
They do as little maintenance as they can. They, all they do is they trim trees so that they don't shade the panels. If they don't shade the panels, they don't do anything outside of fence.
Lori Degman, uh, we're working with the solar moratorium. And the fire chief is going to propose an access road around the perimeter of all solar fields, just a gravel road, to prevent fires from jumping the fence and going into the nearby woods and into the next homes and the abutters. So that's something that could be handled through an order of condition if we're still early enough in the project. That's something we're talking about now.
Have we heard anything from fire? Why, why not, or...
Did not get a comment letter from the budget?
We actually did speak with the fire department when we were talking about the low spot and the sag in the, uh, in the road, which is this area that we're talking about now for the drainage. But we had talked about it initially because of the sag curve and the speed. And because it was a gravel road and the speed limit was gonna be 15, the fire department was comfortable with that. So they were aware of the project. I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know the detail that they went into, but they were giving it all the things that they were, and they, they did actually opine in on the project with us, particularly on the, uh, on this turnaround. Because we had originally designed this with a large cul-de-sac here. And they told us we didn't need that and that would be sufficient.
Excuse me, Pat, did we did get a letter from the fire department as well? Look at that.
They're saying that it's acceptable and all they're asking for is the bar date.
Which we've added in the detail last time we added the class revision.
Last day? It is October 3rd? We just had this at our last meeting and I can forward some paperwork.
Yeah, I think you can.
It's really minimal.
In case of a fire, it seems like to get access back there to the back of the... It seems reasonable, some sort of access to the back.
Would you like Fire Chief to weigh in on that question before we close?
Yeah, I don't wanna...
My only thing is, have we done it to anyone else?
We haven't done it. No, but, yeah, this has been open for quite a while and we don't have the bylaw. I just don't want...
Is that totally a requirement?
Sure, sure, but it's, you know, we've got a, a subcommittee right now coming up with proposals for this and that's something that they feel should be required. And I think we should, you know, take these as they come on too and, and try to implement them. Even though it isn't a bylaw, it, it still could be a, a requirement. If they think it's important enough to do that, the fire department thinks it's important enough to do that, that we should start now and not, and not wait until... The subcommittee is not able to talk or something.
Can we add it as a, I mean, a condition if, if the fire department's, that I feel like this is...
This has been open for quite a while and I...
Can we make it as a condition, yeah, as a condition?
If the fire department requires it. Can we, yeah, let's add it as a condition, but upon the chief's...
Requested, yeah.
Pretty much ask the chief that if he wants it, we'll make it a condition. If not, if he wants to hold off and review the plans and look at it himself, we need to kind of communicate, communicate.
Okay.
So if, if, if he's gonna, if he's gonna require it, then we will...
Do you wanna, before you close the hearing, do you want his, uh, his input or do you wanna close the hearing and...
Make that a condition.
I, I'd, I'd put a couple of things with that condition and they broke it and closed the public hearing.
Yeah, and, and he, he can decide.
Okay, okay.
And, yeah, I'm, I'm, if, whether he wants it or not, whether he wants it or not, it's up to him. And if, and will you reach out and see if that's something, um, well, if he's gonna start reviewing and give us those letters and he can put it right into that?
Okay.
Into that format? So we have a, a process in place? Is everybody comfortable with that? So pretty much we'll reach out and if he says we'll start on the next one or, um, when they have a more of a process in place, then...
It may not be something that's required at every field, but if there's that much, uh, open land behind it, you can...
If it's required for one, it's gotta be required for all. Can't select. Don't wanna get into that?
No. But we'll, um, I'm sure he'll be thrilled. We're putting, we're, we're gonna put it all on his, on his name. I'm sure he'll be thrilled, so, um...
Any other public comment? There were the public comments?
Do we motion to close?
Take motion, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to accept what conditions has discussed?
Yeah, motion to approve this, uh, this plan with conditions, um, in Mike's report number six A. He upgrades to, um, comment number sixteen as far as the, uh, the drainage swale and the fire chief comment on the, uh, his opinion on gravel access road around the entire solar facility.
And the, the stone shoulder that...
Yeah, the stone shoulders, uh, and the riprap.
You okay?
Thank you.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Did you approve the scenic group special permit? The scenic group special permit?
I make motion to approve the scenic group special permit.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You need a four vote for that, four votes.
Yes, you know.
Thank you very much, folks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll be right, I'll be in touch with you, Mr. Scanlon. Thank you very much, folks. Good evening.
Will you just let us know, like, if the file, if they want?
I just wanna, if you wanna get into the making of it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can't be one, but it doesn't seem like that's...
B eight oh four.
Depending on assessment.
In accordance with MGL, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one dash T, and the Childton Planning Board's subsequent regulations, section three point, three point one-two. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven fifteen PM. Um, in the senior center at, in the George C. McKinsey Building, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton Bass, on the application of Valley Bingo, sixteen hundred Osgood Street, North Andover Mass. Requesting approval of the definitive subdivision plan at forty-four Old Worcester Road, Charlton Mass. Accesses map thirty-six block C, part of the map. The proposed subdivision consists of two lots and a roadway with a cul-de-sac approximately a hundred and seventy feet in length. The applicants have requested several waivers of the board's regulations to the property. It was owned by the Charlton Orchards Group, LLC, um, close to Old Worcester Road, Charlton Mass, and its own agricultural aid.
I just would like to correct the waiver portion of this ad. We have not requested any waivers. I thought they, they had...
Find a good spot for it. Is this all right for now? We can turn it around after, maybe, you know?
For now, yes.
All right. Um, Mike Novak from Rainy Associates for the record. I guess I'll go ahead and introduce the team with me tonight, as well as Dan Larry, African project manager, the head of management, Jackie Traynor from Rainy Associates Landscape Architect. So this is the definitive subdivision for Charlton Orchards, as you just mentioned. So, uh, quick, quick overview. I'll, I'll go through this quickly because I know we've got a lot to cover. Excuse me. So the locus map, as you're looking here, locus property is in the red here. View of the, of the surrounding area, north is straight up. Route twenty here, Old Worcester Road through here. It's a little tough to see from there, but we do show the cul-de-sac location on that front. So I'll just, uh, hopefully, we'll, we'll letter as we go. Again, just to remind everyone, existing conditions of the site, tightness there, Worcester Road here, overall site through here, uh, El Turner Road, Old Worcester intersection down to the south here. I apologize, there is a layer off of this and the property lines aren't there. So we're gonna get this one and go right to the next one. Overview of the property of the road, of the entire property. Again, this is lot ten and ten-one. Old Worcester Road and Route twenty meet here, come through Old Worcester, Old Worcester Road, El Turner would have been here. Proposed cul-de-sac along the straightest portion of Old Worcester Road that is out there. Lot B, proposed smaller here, approximately one point four three acres. The larger lot, lot A, remaining area of ninety-two point two plus or minus acres, blow up of the cul-de-sac geometry along with the lot geometry proposed and the outlet geometry shown. Plan and profile sheet, um, again, remembering the orientation. Cul-de-sac tie-in of Old Worcester, grading profile shown here. We are showing obviously significant grading up to catch up through the, excuse me, through the existing slope, which is rather steep. Uh, we are proposing some retaining walls to, to help us catch up a little quicker, to try to minimize impact. Landscape, again, just to fill it up, hopefully so you can see a little better. Proposed street trees, typical detail. Any questions on those? Be happy to have Jackie answer any of those questions. Everything is required for landscaping. We're actually on the sidewalk and proposed driveway entrances to, just to give an idea of how that would grade out. Kept this really brief because I know we have a lot to do. So I think at that point, I'd be happy to turn it over. Any questions? If there's anything, please feel free. With that...
Sure, thank you.
Let me, uh, get out of, so I'm not standing over you.
We issued a letter dated November twelfth, with, uh, twelve comments or so. And we can skip over the minor ones, excuse me, the locations, um, they give away the things like that. We should probably talk about number six, just, just a comment before, aware of the design as mentioned. It's, uh, unusual, I'd say, in that we're trying to build a road on a slope which is very steep. So maintaining the required grades on the road means you have to really cut into that hillside. And the design as it's proposed has up to five terrace retaining walls, um, each about four feet high with two one-graded slopes in between each of those. So, um, is, you know, cuts of up to forty feet or so at the back of the cul-de-sac just to make the road work. And those walls and slopes are all outside of the right-of-way. But, um, reviewing the minor street standard grove and cross-section, which is basically a detail of how to build a road in town that's attached to the subdivision regulations. It does call for a three-to-one maximum cut and fill slopes outside the right-of-way, which this plan doesn't comply with. So, um, it was my opinion that we needed a waiver for the design as it's currently proposed. So that was comment number six. Seven, we could talk about, oh, um, it's a procedural question, really. Proposed subdivision would combine two existing lots and create two new lots. It was my, it's my opinion that you can't subdivide land that is, doesn't exist yet. It's not one parcel, no, it's two parcels. So before they can do the subdivision, we need to merge the two lots before we can subdivide it through another plan and process. So, um, that's just a procedural kind of note. And the other comment we should talk about is a bit about the drainage. Obviously, retaining walls require drainage behind them. And comment number eleven speaks to about having, um, that discharge for those subdrains, not dump onto the road and discharge somewhere outside the roadway. There is no drainage system proposed on this roadway. Stone management doesn't apply because it's only two lots. However, um, looking at the grading of the lot and the roadway, I think it does require some management of the drainage so that this cul-de-sac and road don't just all dump out into Old Worcester Road. And I, I'm not sure where the water will go once it enters Old Worcester Road. It could travel east or west or north and south, I'm sorry, or across the road and potentially impact, you know, the roadway or right-of-way or maybe the private property. So I think some drainage is needed, even though, again, stormer management doesn't apply if somebody can address drainage in some manner and managing that. So that was, I'm sorry, that was comment number ten. So I think those are the ones that really owe warrant discussion at this point. And certainly, if anyone wants to talk about any other comments, if there's any more detail, we can do that. we can do that.
Excuse me, if I may. I don't necessarily have any issues with the comments. I'd like to have the opportunity to, to try to address them and then come back to you with, um, another review from Mr. DeAndre and see if we can come to an agreement on these being met. With regards to the waiver, I think that we will take a hard look and see if we could meet that criteria without the waiver. And I am curious, if I could ask, I don't know if this is the response from the chair or, or Mr. Scanlon, but, uh, has, has a waiver of that nature ever been granted prior from this board? Just out of curiosity, really.
Uh, ask Mike if you know of that's...
Oh, okay, Mike.
Well, um, I've been the consultant for the planning board for twenty years. I'm not at every meeting, but...
Sure.
It's possible I don't have any revelations of a specific instance.
You can, you can say that, that, uh, no, never, it's not...
I can't say no, never, and I can't say yes.
Fair enough, okay. So...
I don't remember us doing a waiver for, um, stuff like retaining walls, anything that could possibly be safety, but, um...
Again, the intent is, the intent is to try to avoid the waiver, which I'd like to try to do, but I was just curious if that is unavoidable, what kind of criteria that we're looking for to, to think that that waiver might be worth something, I think, instead of granting. If that's something we'll, we can discuss in the next meeting. I don't think you have the, the real question in front of you, so I don't think it's fair to ask you to apply on it. Um, everything else, I think that we just need to, we just need to...
Send A N R.
I would have preferred the attorney on the trial for that one.
I, I'm not aware of a requirement that you have to A N R lots in order to subdivide them. I've done numerous subdivisions over the years and I can confer with town council, but we did include a portion of each lot in the subdivided lots, so I believe when you're including parts of both lots, you can, in fact, subdivide them, but we can confirm with the, with town council on that, and if, if that's necessary, we can certainly file an A N R injunction with this and have them both filed at the same time.
Yeah, put them in the court door. Other than that, I think that's all I would say in response to the comments.
Okay, I had shot an email to, um, Mark about that, and he just hasn't responded yet, like, lately, I mean, so...
Okay. I think he's, 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 might be away at a trial or something.
He's in Calif, I mean, he's, he's on, he's on business, he's in planning business, he just couldn't be here, but he's, I did talk to him today, it's just, this just came up after, so...
So I think once we, once we receive their proposal and they compare, we'll, we'll proceed with whatever result comes across.
So, do we just wanna, do we have questions before we...
When was the preliminary filed? Do we have time to, what's the, what's the timeframe?
I believe it was filed before town meeting, which was May twenty-first. I think you filed May second.
So they have seven months...
They have seven months on the date of filing to submit their definitive, which they have met.
Which they have met, yes.
Yes.
Well, if we don't have a specific timeline to approve this, we can...
It's really, they must submit within seven months because you take as long as you need to review and approve a decision.
I think the, and you can double check with Mark. I think it's from when you close the hearing on the definitive, then you have a timeframe for this, and I think it's...
But we're talking about the zoning freeze portion of this.
Yeah, so I, again, I think to your question, you want to make sure that you're within appropriate timeframe so that there's no constructive. I believe that the only timeframe left for this board, and I, I would defer to Mark, but I believe it's from your closing the hearing on the definitive. So if you were to close, if you were done taking in information, then I think it, and I'm going off the top of my head, but I think it's then ninety days to issue a decision, I, I believe.
Mike, can you talk to the retaining wall issue? How, how tall is that and, I'm not sure, what's the, what's the method of construction?
Well, I don't know for necessarily, I don't, a definite, um, method of construction, it would probably be a block wall. Um, we tried to keep them in a relative four-foot increment, as Mike mentioned, to try to not make them too over, overwhelming. Um, again, I think we're gonna, based on the comments, I think we're gonna take another look at all of this in general, so I, I don't really wanna dig too deep into this because I have a feeling this is gonna change a little bit based on the comments, so I don't wanna sidestep any question, but I think...
So is it a step up by four?
Yeah, the idea was a tiered, not just one gigantic overwhelming wall, just kind of a subtle, as subtle as you can go on that slope, I'll admit, but...
What's the total full height from, from the road up to the top of the top?
From the road, when you say the road, from the start of Old Worcester?
From the, from the base of the snow, of the retaining wall?
Well, there's multiple walls.
Right, and how, how, many feet elevation is that about to?
Uh, let's see, the, the front of the first wall is at about elevation eight oh seven, and then there's one, two, three, four, five walls that tier up at four-foot increments with grading in between, and then at the top of that slope, you're at a bottom wall of eight forty-seven to top wall of approximately eight fifty-one. So from the bottom of the very first wall, eight oh seven, which I think is what you're asking to the very top of the last wall, eight fifty-one. But again, we're gonna evaluate that and maybe make it a little less...
What was the square footage on, um, maybe Lot A? You said on Lot B?
Yeah, sure.
One point four three?
I believe that was the number. And then ninety-two point two four. And one point four three for Lot A. Square footage for that, the smaller number, sixty-two thousand, so I believe sixty thousand is the zoning, so we're slightly over on that. Does that, that a question?
Maybe you can give it an open look up to the public?
Give it another question.
Okay, we can open up to the public, please keep it on the subdivision plan, the definitive, um, we have, we have another hearing after, so...
Madam Chairman, Gerard Russell, sixty-three, Old Worcester Road. Um, I'm gonna have to beg your forgiveness of my ignorance in this whole process, but, so we're discussing the definitive subdivision plan, which, uh, the Graves Engineering Report says that, uh, this is for zoning protection only, not intended to be constructed as the property is currently under review. And this wall is not on the site plan for Valley Green Grove. Am I right up to this point? So if it isn't intended to be part of that project, um, why is it part of a definitive subdivision plan? Madam Chairman?
Do I, can I say that? Sure. To obtain a zoning freeze.
So the reason is just to do that? Well, let me ask this, I mean, as I understand it, you have, as has been described, retaining wall after retaining wall, there'd be five different walls, I think, maybe fifty-foot elevation change. I mean, the way I look at it, I envisioned my mind's eye as a, excavators would come in and basically take a huge bite out of the side of the, the hill, and that's right in front of my house. Uh, so my, my question is, if the board were to approve the definitive subdivision plan, and right now it's just imaginary, but if the board were to take a vote to approve it, at some point, could Valley Green Grove then come in and build this monstrosity in front of my property?
Yes, if they get definitive plan approval, they would be entitled to go that way.
Okay. A follow-up question. Um, can Valley Green Grove address what their plan is possibly to build within whatever amount of time they would have if this plan were approved? Is there, we know there's a cul-de-sac and there are giant walls, what are they gonna put there?
It would depend on what happens with our site plan. If we don't show it on our site plan or our site plan is approved, I don't believe we would build it.
Another question, Madam. If, uh, if the plan were approved and the board were, were to approve the site plan, is it possible that the medical cannabis production could then be, and this would be a question for, uh, Mr. Rosen, uh, then would be converted to recreational and the possibility of a, a retail, uh, component with a dispensary in that cul-de-sac?
First of all, I don't believe it meets the requirements for a sizable lot to build the dispensary there, but second of all, because it's part of the total acreage of the entire property and we're using the full twenty-five percent, we would not have the ability to build any additional square footage on the property.
Madam Chairman, could we make that a condition if there is approval? That there'd be no dispensary in that cul-de-sac?
Valley Green Grove would have no objection to there not being a dispensary on that cul-de-sac. I think the appropriate place to put it would be in the site plan approval, not in the definitive approval, but I think a condition that states to the extent that the applicant does move forward with a definitive subdivision plan, there would be a restriction against any dispensary. I mean, my client would not have an objection with that. I do, and ju, just real quick, I look up, I believe it's ninety days from the submission of the definitive. The definitive was submitted on October fourth, but I believe it was, I'm sorry, October twenty-fourth. I believe it was accepted at your hearing the following week, so I don't know whether it's ninety days from October twenty-fourth or ninety days from November seventh, but you're either looking at the end of January or the beginning of February. Okay? And, and again, I would ask you to confirm that with Attorney Bobrowski. Um, just, I, I pulled the law real quick just to, because I wanted to be accurate on my response.
My only concern is we, we, you know, we're, our meetings coming up the next few weeks are pretty busy and it's, I don't know, but, but extended much to the January, probably November, that you...
This shouldn't take modification, shouldn't, yeah.
It's a modification from two to one to three to one, or a request for a waiver, and I'm not sure that there's that much else.
No, but I mean, we can keep it within that timeframe, to, to be fair. As possible, give them more than that to schedule a review.
Margaret Russell, sixty-three, Old Worcester Road. I live at Jersey. My concern is the drainage. Uh, we are downhill from this. If it, if it's a steep cul-de-sac, um, that may or may not be built, um, there are two driveways that come up right in that area of where the cul-de-sac is proposed. Both of them are going downhill. There's also a culvert between our property and our next-door neighbor that takes water from the hill already and drops it off behind, um, in the back of our properties. So I think that's a big concern for us in the neighborhood is to see something that's going to basically funnel water onto Old Worcester Road, cross the street, and down our driveways.
In, um, in Mike's view, it, it was built multiple times, the drainage, the retaining walls and everything else, so, um, of course, that would be part of a condition. Who would have just let you guys live in a lake down there?
Should we address? Steve Kilanis, seventeen, Old Worcester Road. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused on this definitive subdivision plan. We're, we're still talking about two parcels, correct? Oh, and we're not, and we're not talking about the V G G project as a whole, correct? But we're looking at photographs of what the orchard would look like after V G G is, is, um, and Mike brought up a good point. Mike, Mike's actually said, he's, he's not sure of the drainage on Old Worcester Road. We live on that road? We had a heavy rain this weekend? The water comes right across that road all the time, all the time, at, at probably ten or twelve spots without putting up a thirty-foot, um, Frankenstein Castle wall going up the side of the hill. I, and I'm a little, so this definitive subdivision plan, now it's ninety days from October twenty-fourth, Mr. Rosen, is that what you said when it was filed?
I suggested that I believe that that's what it is, looking briefly at my phone. I'm looking for the rag, trying to get some information for members of the...
So, so that was a definitive?
If I could finish. However, my suggestion is that they reach out to Attorney Bobrowski and have him confirm that for them.
Okay.
And I think we will keep...
But that, but, so the definitive October twenty-fourth, but we hear their engineer say that, well, you know, we've still got a little more work to do on that. So there's, so if you have more work to do on it, where does the word definitive come in at that point?
It's the title identified by, under Massachusetts law, so we got comments from Graves Engineering on November twelve, and today is November fourteenth, and we're working on addressing the concerns identified by Graves two days ago.
But you filed the, the motion for, for subdivision freeze in April.
Correct.
So that's six months, we're still, we still know where the water's gonna go on to these people's property.
I'm gonna suggest that the board just take that up to town council. We're, we're in compliance with the law and we're meeting all of the requirements.
Yeah, we can't question this.
Okay. Just a question.
Laurie Day, Pennsylvania, Osgood Road. I just, I have a question for the board, if you could clarify this. I dealt a lot with the solar and the preliminary subdivision plans, um, getting it under the wire. They've mentioned it's now two lots, they want to make it one, so therefore that subdivision is no longer, and according to the zoning protection, uh, by putting it in prior, it may protect them, uh, but since on the mass.gov website, it mentioned if it's merely to circumvent a zoning freeze, then it may not be protected. So they're going from two lots to one, and that, to me, isn't a subdivision any longer.
We've actually learned that same thing.
We do, um...
Is that...
We just received the, the information also, and our attorney hasn't had a chance to review, he did come on pretty last minute, so all of that will be addressed and reviewed.
Question is again, how, and I also want to echo what Laurie said, I, I do, I, I am, I would like clarification on whether or not it's legal to file a subdivision plan with the, the sole purpose is to freeze the zoning and not to actually build a subdivision. It doesn't appear to adhere to the spirit of the law at all.
The law is, is pretty clear on that point. You, you can file a plan to protect all your rights under the prior zoning, and you don't actually have to build a plan that you, you file. It's really more of an administrative process that gives the landowner the protection that he seeks to build the project under the prior zoning.
But you just said that the lots are already two and you want to actually combine them to one, and as Laurie pointed out, that's not a subdivision. And then afterwards, they're saying they'd like to subdivide them. They didn't actually ever combine, and the intent was to actually subdivide something that is already two into something else. What I'm trying to say is it doesn't line up, it doesn't appear to adhere to the law.
Well, the, the law says that you file the plan to protect the land, not to protect the plan that you proposed. So the land is protected by the filing of the first preliminary and then the definitive plan.
And I, the follow-up question to that, but Bill, when, when that happens, from what we understand, that puts the onus no longer, when, when they file preliminary subdivision plan, that puts the onus on the planning board and no longer the zoning enforcement officer? Is that correct? From, that's, that's what we understand, from attorneys we've been talking to.
Well, in order to maintain the freeze, the planning board has to ultimately approve the definitive plan.
Correct. But, but it's no longer, it's no longer the zoning enforcement officer's position at that point?
Uh, well, no, it's the planning board. Uh, they have jurisdiction over the subdivision control process.
Ken Howard, one eighty-one, Old Worcester Road. If I'm missing something, I'm sorry. Can somebody explain to me, all the plans I've seen before, El Turner Road was gonna be the main access, what is the purpose of the cul-de-sac?
It's truly administrative for the zoning freeze, that's, if we do it, we probably do twenty of them for solar plans. It's, it, this is the extended odd thing that is done to get your zoning freeze for the, for the land, when it changes. the land when a change is going to take place.
Of the subdivision, but there's still a possibility that the cul-de-sac could appear down the road.
I don't think we've ever seen that, but technically.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Hi, Nick Osslant, 470 Old Worcester Road. Took a look at this, and it's very difficult to sort of figure out exactly where this is located compared to all the other structures in the area. So for example, when, it looks like it's across from Mr. Russell's house, but actually if you go to the proposed plans by VGG for the marijuana facility, and you actually go in 250 feet from that point with your, with your road, you're more or less undermining the existing or the proposed recharge system and road that's there. So would it be possible to have a little more definition on these plans so that we can actually put some of the information from the proposed VGG project on the plan so you can see how everything lines up? I mean, if you look at where the houses are down here, you can see where it looks like the shape of Mr. Russell's house, but if you actually scale it in 250 feet per this, what's shown on the kind of site plan project, the back wall is actually undermining the road which is right next to the recharge system. So obviously that would cause a huge drainage problem, you know, recharging, according to stormwater management, you're not allowed to have any recharge within 50 feet of a slope that's greater than 15%. There are a number of those on this project, which we'll get to next, but in this particular case, you're basically going to be recharging and it's all going to be going into this road that they're proposing, if, you know, I mean, if they were to actually build it. So it doesn't kind of make any sense.
Sure. There's two separate indecent applications. One is a subdivision plan. It's a look to see whether we comply with state and local regulations regarding the subdivision of land. As you previously indicated, you had 20 or so of these when it came to solar. This is a subdivision plan, period and historic. When we go forward with the site plan review and approval, you have the right to look at us and tell us you're going to condition it on us not putting in that wall, not putting in that cul-de-sac, to the extent that this gentleman's concern is that putting in that cul-de-sac will interfere with drainage, stormwater, stormwater management. That would quite frankly be a reasonable condition. But there are two separate indecent applications. This one is intended to stand on its own, to design something that is buildable.
For the site plan for the project that they plan on doing in this location, they plan on including both parcels in that, in that plan to meet the square footage. Will they have to rescind this subdivision plan to be able to do that, or can they actually build that on two pieces of property?
I don't know the answer to that question.
And I guess my follow-up is if they do rescind this subdivision plan, does that still freeze zoning for them to be able to do that?
I would say if they rescind the plan, then they would lose their zoning freeze.
That's going to be a Mark question.
Otherwise, they don't meet square footage of the property without this.
I know for the calculation of the building coverage requirement, they have excluded the new lot, the eight and a half lot that they're proposing, has been excluded from the total lot area for building coverage calculations.
Okay.
Are they going to have to do, they're going to have to do an AR before this can actually be approved, correct? To comply with the item seven because of, is that not true?
Well, I think we should verify that with counsel to be sure.
That's my, that was my interpretation, but is that what you?
That was my feeling. I didn't think a subdivision plan combined lots, you only subdivide lots. Again, that's a question for.
So Madam Chair, I have other questions. Your typo on the plan, you're showing two sets of utilities going to, into the cul-de-sac. One that looks like it's servicing the main lot B, and one on the other side of the road. Is that accurate, or is that just a typo? You have two, two inch water mains and two six inch sewer services going.
Correct, yes, we're showing two water service stubs and two sewer service stubs for each proposed lot, and then we're also showing a six inch water stub to go up the right away for fire protection. Each lot will have its own water and sewer connection with a common water line for fire protection. So, and then also a electric, underground electric to service both lots, that's why I went through the right away. I believe that is all the utilities that are shown.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Hi, Noreen Johnson Smith, just on Old Worcester Road. I'm just curious about the legality where it kind of meets this display, and it feels a bit, it's beyond disingenuous, but it feels a bit like the emperor has no clothes. Remember that childhood fairy tale where they build a beautiful invisible set of clothes and everyone says that's perfect? And then there is no such thing. I mean, this is an exercise in, it's a waste of our time, it's a waste of your time, it's a waste of the architect's time, it's a waste of everyone's time, while we're faced with a completely different set of plans that we know are the actual intent of the project. So I would be hard pressed to think of a development initiative that filed such a disingenuous original set of plans. I understand for development purposes, you don't want willy-nilly changes in a town to disrupt long-term projects that take years to plan, and you can't get started on a project and have things change mid-point. You'd never get anything done. In this case, we're being presented with a set of fake plans while we're being presented with the actual plans at the same time, and I find it hard to believe that the laws of Massachusetts intend to uphold such a process. And I know the case law on subdivisions and filings is not based on situations like this where there are two sets of completely conflicting plans and intentions when that case law was determined. So I would just ask if perhaps we could get legal counsel from the planning board's counsel on that particular point.
Well, I mean, this is definitely a quirky thing, but we do it all the time.
I understand the general function of the.
But in most cases, excuse me, but in most cases, that would be, you want to build six houses, you sign out, you build purpose four. It's not, it's not, you want to build two houses in a million square foot marijuana facility. Okay.
No, it's, I want to build a solar farm, this moratorium, so I'm going to submit my plan to freeze that land so I can be a feasible, that's, this is the same, this is the same deal as, as that, but they're not building a solar farm. It's, it's very quick for you.
But I would suggest that, that if you want to approve this plan, it's actually a viable plan. Is that fair to say? Because right now, that's not really a viable plan in my mind. It's basically undermining their own road and their own recharge system. It just doesn't really make any sense. So just in case they decide to build it, you know what I mean, or change their other plans. So I think that it would be fair that, you know, when they come with a plan, it's actually a realistic plan that you can actually construct and make sense.
My only point was just basically, when people say, well, we've always done it this way, it doesn't always mean it's done right. And I'm not trying to pick on the board and say that subdivision control law is perfect, that sound like it's pretty murky, but in this case, clearly, I'm not sure what you were told in April when the preliminary subdivision plan was filed, but was there any intent given that there would be a million square foot factory? Was there any intent delivered? I mean, when people file subdivision applications, aren't they a little bit honest, ever? I, I'm not on the planning board, so I really don't know the answer.
Good question. That's a good question.
We should expect honesty from people who want to do business here. We should, there should be a bar.
Well, at that point in time, they had been before the selectmen, so I think we knew what their real intent was when they filed.
Who knew what the intent was?
Well, when they had gone to the selectmen for their post-community agreement.
But this is April, this is April 25th, I watched the video like 50 times, and then it was May 2nd. They didn't go to the selectmen until 15th.
No, when we, when we, when we got, just to clarify that, when we got the preliminary plan, we honestly believed that it was, it was a solar farm when it was presented to us, at least that's what we did. And we joked around about the name, but it was, we didn't, we didn't connect it to us, so we were going to. But we want to go home before 11th, so is there, do we have any more questions on the subdivision plan?
All right, just one more, and again, to go along with Kathleen's comment. So you have until December 4th to approve or deny the pretty pictures we're looking at, not what we're talking about tonight, so.
What does that do with this?
No, I know, I understand, but it's still tying up another meeting and another, and everything else that they've come forward with, they haven't really given any definitive answers on anything.
Take my questions.
I'm sorry.
This is, well, I'm sorry to be so blunt, but we have to get everything in. We are working on this definitive subdivision right now, and that's the only thing we're going to address right now. One last question, yes. One last question on it. There's a, there's a, the subdivision plan shows an enormous lot that's about 90 acres, and then a lot that's 1.4 something acres. Is that a house lot? Is this a commercial subdivision plan or a residential subdivision plan?
Well, it's in the agricultural district.
But what is the intent? There's, I'm sorry?
It's in the agricultural district, so the use would have to be allowed in that district.
So I guess what I'm asking is the lot that's 1.4 acres, is it a house lot?
I assume so.
I would ask.
They're both legal lots for that, so it doesn't, it doesn't matter what, it could be a field, but it's a legal, it's a legal lot. Not for subdivision. It's a legal, buildable lot.
But you would ask if you were combining two to four, two, two to one to two.
And if we need to get an AR, we'll, we'll ask.
Make a motion, we continue?
Second.
Call it fever?
Aight.
All right, so we'll continue this to, when we like to continue this to. When do you guys think it will be?
What was the option?
We'll be here the 28th.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say I can't do the 28th, okay? Let's say the 28th.
And we'll touch base with Mark too for any of those.
Yes. Forward with these comments, otherwise, this is all definitely on the, let's give it one for us.
Are we rendering to that, by the way? Should we be rendering to?
I am the one who makes the bad jokes. Don't you do it.
The police chief is here, you know, if you want to take security, so.
So we're going to open the Valley Green Grove site plan application. We'll go through the police right first, so we'll have, we'll do security first and.
Madam Chair, if I could just do a quick introduction in respecting that, because I do have some answers to questions, but I'll cover those later, but if I could first introduce Ryan Windmill of the Windmill Group, who is leading our security efforts, and he'd like to give a short presentation on security and the facility.
Perfect.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Scalen and attendees. My name for the record is Ryan Windmill, the president of Windmill Group, our homeland security firm based in Washington DC, and we're representing VGG on security. First off, I just, I know it's late, but I just want to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to talk about security, and I'll do it as briefly as possible. Also, just want to thank the chief of police, who's in attendance, I had the pleasure of speaking and meeting with him, for listening to some of our concerns, as well as opening up a dialogue, as well as spending the last couple hours listening to the interest presented before the board tonight. So as I was introduced, we're based in Washington DC, but I'm from Massachusetts, Boston College undergrad, Suffolk Law School, set up the homeland security program here after 9/11, then went on to federal service. Partners are all former DEA, so we have a lot of experience in this industry. Jermaine, to this project, we set up similar ones across the country, including several different states, not only Massachusetts, but Colorado, California, Arizona, Nevada, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Florida. So we're very interested in two things, compliance and best practices when it comes to safety and security. Real briefly, what I wanted to do was just give you a quick, and I apologize to any members of the audience, because I have my back to you and I'll do my best, but I just brought forward a four-point plan. Basically, we call this the gold standard. And the reason we called it the gold standard is really simple. When we look at Massachusetts, it's one of the best in the state for compliance and security and safety. No matter what you do with a business, you have to be a responsible business enterprise in the community. You start that by building a safety culture. The rules, and I'm not a critic of any of them, are excellent, but what we're proposing to do and want to do is not only meet those standards, but exceed those expectations. And we do that by looking at what the rest of the country is definitively doing as a best practice in all the other states that I just mentioned. So the four points of this are very straightforward and simple. The first one is, excuse me, a risk assessment and recommendations. Not required by law, not required by any state entity or local entity, but proactively, VGG is looking to do a risk assessment. And what we do is definitively come in, in advance, before anybody starts with any groundbreaking. We take a look at those plans, we put them into a 120-page document, we look at all the safety factors, we look at all the compliance factors, we look at all the best practices, and then before we even break ground, even though the state doesn't require this, we go back to the police and we go back to the fire, and we ask for their input on this. This is strictly security. So to start with, and I know you guys have a lot of plans on this already in terms of the buildup and design, but when it comes to safety and security, we already have a blueprint and it's documented, and we get right into it with details and pictures. Of course, we don't share this, you know, we ask for input from the community, we ask for input from police, the town and police and fire, but, you know, this is really so that we start off and we're not stumbling out of the blocks on this. The second thing included in this, and I'm sorry, I should have brought a slide, but I'm trying to talk quickly because it's late on in the interest of time, is once we get started with the risk assessment, then we got a baseline foundation and we move into our security plans. We have, and I'll show you just briefly, a copy of one of the plans. We've set the standard in Massachusetts by writing a plan that not only covers safety and security, but here's the thing, any firm with all due respect out of Washington DC, I don't care where you are, can write a good plan. That's fine, you get something that's cookie cutter. What's different about our plans is two things. One, again, we go back to police and fire, we look for the customization piece. We want the input and the stakeholder buy-in from your first responder. So should an incident occur of any magnitude, small, large, medium, does not matter, we're asking firsthand experts who would be otherwise showing up if an incident were to occur for their input. And then we build this out further by, as I mentioned, we get some, my firm has former DEA members on there, an extensive anti-diversion campaign and plan outlined in here, and again, we share that with law enforcement. And when we've submitted it to the state before, because we've done a couple of the other facilities in here, my former partner, he was the chief inspector for DEA, he wrote the book on diversion. It's a 16-point plan. Transparency is included in it, so you can take a look at, you know, what we're doing moving forward with that. Last but not least is phase three, and this is where we get into some of the transparency or continued transparency, as we've established a relationship and we build out a security system design. So, you know, we're talking about retaining walls, we're talking about aesthetics, this is really where the nuts and bolts is, and this is just a sample from another state. We look at exterior surveillance, lighting, perimeter controls, and then we get into the building itself, and I know there's a lot of questions, and sometimes we can't share some of this stuff with the members of public, but we get into detail in terms of, I'll just show that to you, because I don't want to do it from a distance, we get into the details. The state, to their credit, does a great job in terms of saying, look, camera coverage The state, to their credit, does a great job in terms of saying, look, camera coverage, 24-hour surveillance. They do an inspection, they send out an inspection team. I applaud the state on that, because it's very proactive. We're gonna make this a state-of-the-art facility, and again, take these plans for the third time, go back to police, go back to fire, and ask them for the help. The last part of the plan is really simple and straightforward. We have a methodology, we have a phased approach, but the fourth part of it is a relationship. We do all this with a design effort of basically establishing a dialogue in partnership with the town. We can't claim to be a responsible business enterprise unless we solicit input and feedback from your first responders, your fire, your police, your town, your neighbors, which is an important part, and we'll touch on that perhaps at a different meeting or later. But the idea here is, we want to build transparency, we want to build best practices, we want to have compliance and safety, and we want to build a relationship that has an open dialogue so that we're not otherwise presenting a cookie cutter approach to our security. We're rather, we're building a best class facility and addressing all those security concerns upfront. So I will stop there. I'm sorry if I talked too fast, I had a cup of coffee before I came here. I appreciate your time and thank you for allowing me to touch on security tonight. And thank you to the chief who's attending as well.
Ask the chief.
Would you like to present? Would you like to, do you have comments or do you want to?
Just to the extent that we had a great meeting. I see a lot of concerns of residents, sort of traffic, property values, the impact, or cuts on 20, all the things that we've talked about, that everybody's talked about tonight. So wherever this goes, we are going to be closely monitoring what's happening from here and staying close to contact with everybody who lives in the neighborhood, as well as in the community, to make sure that we force the laws as written.
So you designed the security, you supervised the building of it. Are you also maintaining and being part of the security team, or do you pretty much build it, design it, and walk away?
Two, that's a good question. I like that question. It's both. So, so there's ongoing relationship to set it up, like I said. But then in terms of maintaining the compliance, the system itself will be monitored 24 hours by two remote dual-system monitoring stations. So that'll be a third party, because there's a couple in Massachusetts. But then, in addition to that, one of my partners, former DEA agent, special agent, he was also the chief compliance officer for the Department of Public Health. Highest ranking guy for compliance. He did all the inspections. He's now part of our team. We will be doing independent audits. That's our value. We come in and we basically say, hey, on a quarterly, monthly basis, on an annual basis, is everything in full compliance? I don't think there's any better authority than, than my partner. So that will be part of the ongoing relationship. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah. Um, are those independent audits part of the, part of the mandatory security for CCC? Or is that just something, that's just another service?
They require an audit on the security system monthly. We propose to do it weekly. It's easy. You're looking at a big system, you can test it electronically. You know, any proactive facility that's government-run is usually doing monthly or bi-weekly. So again, when we talk about the standard, like, I, I think the bar is too low when they say do it just quarterly. I'm like, we want to know that that's 24-hour, seven days a week, and running all the time. So test it as often as you can. Sorry. It's just, that helps.
I, so, part of security to me is that, is the fencing and, I'm assuming there's razor wire and stuff. Again, I've been working a lot in prison, so I have that image in my head. Can you kind of tell me what that's gonna look like? I, really, I mean, are the neighbors gonna be driving down the street seeing a chain link with razor wire? Just, I know I'm blowing my mind, but I want to see, what are we gonna be looking at when we're?
Sort that, probably a combination of the two.
Hey, just, let me know, sorry, let me tell you what the standard is. So you, the whole idea is, you don't want to look like a prison. That's crazy. If I was living across the street, I would say, I would be screaming that. The idea is balance, right? So the whole idea is, we employ depth and defense architecture design, similar to what you would see with an embassy. You don't see barbed wire out at an embassy, it's like thoughtful architecture built in. And there's layers of defense, just specific to the perimeter fencing. You know, we always recommend that for, the state requires perimeter fencing, it's just a requirement. Lighting has to go with it. Typically, we recommend eight feet tall, so it's, you know, out of the sightlines, but somebody can't scale it easy. Reinforcement ties at the bottom. Barbed wire where it's out of sight and also a vulnerability. But then we've got camera access monitoring, and so don't think of the fence as just an independent system or someplace that's vulnerable or secure. We want to try and design it thoughtfully, so that systematically it protects the facility as one of seven or eight layers that, you know, need to be penetrated in order to get up, is a requirement by the state, so we have to have it, we can't not have a fence. And the idea is like, and we also agree, we don't want something that looks like Fort Knox. That's, that's madness. That's not a responsible business entity. We also, at the same time, have a countermeasure in place, so it's, you know, the fence plus a motion detector plus a camera, and without getting into specifics, you know, some input and thought is designed to it regarding how we surround the facility.
Do we have pictures of this?
Yeah, if I could just throw in a couple of things there. So the, so not concertina wire, not razor wire, just single strand of barbed wire is what we proposed. That's nearly impossible to show in the renderings at this scale, but we do have a number of images that show what the... So we've proposed a six-foot fence with a single strand of barbed wire across the top and inside of it. So it's, I don't think the wire's gonna be visible, but... So if you look along the line there, you can see pieces of the fence. Dan, why don't we grab this one, run it up? That one's got a good... So this, this is standing, right, just, just before you would be taking the turn into L. Turner Drive, looking up. So this is L. Turner Drive right here, coming up, up the hill to the security house, the security asset thing. So this is the, the six-foot fence to scale there.
So how far is it from the road, if I'm standing out on the road, about?
Um, I'm confused with the distance. We have to pull it up.
I don't need exactly.
From the road to the security.
So, so the, I'm sorry, what was the question specifically?
How far from the road to the security?
If I'm standing in the road, what am I, how far, how far is that fence away from me?
Oh, how far is the fence?
It would depend on where you're standing.
Closest point is 200. Closest point is 207 and a half feet approximately. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the building, so 24 feet closer. So, uh... 100 meters.
How about from the back of the neighbor's property? Probably on the corner there as well. Plus, less than 100?
No.
No, no, about 175 to 200.
Yeah, 200. I said that's 200. Yeah, that's, that's pretty, yeah. I don't have to scale this.
It's over 200.
But we do have some distances labeled in sheet five, that show the assets in the building to the property lines. So I think you could kind of, with the 24-foot, you can kind of understand where the fence is falling. Give regards to that.
I've been asking, I have a lot of fun asking.
That's on sheet five.
Do you guys have questions?
No.
Security.
I'll open it up for questions. Keep to...
Madam Chair, I just have a quick question. For Mr. Windmill, as a former federal law enforcement officer, I just can't help myself, but any claims about participating in an operation which is blatantly against federal law?
What, I'm gonna answer that, you can take that up with your counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have another, I have another question. And, and again, Mr. Windmill, I'm impressed with your credentials and your background. I read a response from the Department of Public Health that came out last week, that I think your name was mentioned to. And you were, they had questioned how many other organizations like this you were involved in. So this, you're obviously not just working for VGG, but they, the department, Massachusetts Department of Public Health actually questioned how many other people you're working with, and is that okay? And they kind of wanted to know that. And that's the first part of my question. You can answer that one if you want, and I've got...
Are you talking about the response to our pending application?
Yes.
So the question is to ensure that they don't have a financial interest in companies. And the response was submitted to the DPH, and you can go online and read the response.
The response was only for that?
Yes.
Or, or working for too many, too many different?
No, it has, it has to do with whether or not you have an interest in companies, and they're looking to determine whether or not you have ownership.
And your, your answer was obviously no.
Correct.
But, but, but you seem like a very highly skilled man, so what do you... And this seems like a pretty elaborate security system. As neighbors in a butters, what are you afraid about? This, in a residential neighborhood? This is, this, we're, we're, we're used to living here in Apple Orchard. Now, what's going, what, what are your fears? What are you, what are you protecting the facility from? What's, what are your biggest fears?
That's irrelevant to the, to the application we have pending. I, I think the gentleman knows the answers on why this is being protected. It's obligated to be protected under the CCC and under the DPH regulations. You're obligated to have a security plan, you're obligated to have security protect, protection, and we're doing that.
I think that's a good question. I'd like to know.
Well, you're, once you start talking, and you're, you seem highly skilled. Once you start talking four, five, six layers, you're kind of like...
I, I really actually respect sincerity of your question. Let me stand up and say this, a couple of things. One is, I'll back up, I'll even go on record and want to say this. To your point about some of the groups we work with, yeah, no financial interest. The point is, that, that's our integrity. We have, we have zero financial interest so that we can be objective. And that, that to me is, is hopefully a sign of integrity. To your, to your question of, you know, what keeps me up, let me answer that from a perspective of a father with a three-year-old and a six-year-old, and family lives in Massachusetts, and, you know, a lifetime of, of public safety and service to the state. Having surveyed the country and looked at this market industry, what, what keeps me up is other groups who aren't as responsible as VGG. With regards to, they get up and they sell a town a boatload of goods, and then it comes time, and I had this conversation with the chief earlier, to put your money where your mouth is, not for compliance, but to set a standard. Set a standard for, you know, patient services, best practices in security, being a good neighbor, and really what my last point was, having a relationship with the town. I see, you know, the expression is, money makes a blind sea, and they come in guns blazing, and they're ready to go and make a gazillion dollars, and then they cut corners. And they promise boards like this, I'm gonna do this, and I'm gonna promise you that, and everybody's gonna be happy, and then they get in and they're not good neighbors. That is not the case definitively with this group. I think they're gonna come in and be an incredible partner with the town. I think that they're gonna be, as, well, I can speak for security, okay? So I'm just talking about safety and security. They're gonna set the standard in Massachusetts, we're gonna be there to support them. I'm gonna lean on both the chiefs in this town, as well as the town government, and input from the neighbors to build it into a best practice. We can't do it alone. But what keeps me up at night is groups that aren't VGG. The ones that come in and want to make a gazillion dollars and just get the votes, be up and running and compliant. And that personally just drives me nuts. That's my, that's, that's what I, you know, worry about at night, those types of groups.
Let me follow that, can I follow that up for you? So I, so I took the question totally different, and you did a risk analysis, you did your risk assessment on what, what could possibly happen. And you're building worst-case scenario, what could happen, what, what, what do we need this security for? That's what I believe as an officer. So I'm assuming it's the same thing, just a little bit different. So what is, what are the, what are the, what are, what does, what do our neighbors need to be scared of? What were you looking at, the worst-case scenario here? And I'm not meaning scaring everybody, but are we talking about armed robbery? What is, what's, what's all the security for?
That's good, that's good. First off, like I said, there's, there's the state's standard, and that's great. But when you go on and you look at this enterprise, whether it's this industry or any other industry, anybody who gets up here and tells you, we're gonna be 100% safe, and I, I think the chief, I won't speak for him, would probably back me up on this, is like, is the guy that should be shown the door first. Like, you're never gonna have 100% safe. So like, to your point about, like, what's that threat? Like, what are we looking at? The reality in having 20 years of experience doing this is, the threat is everything. So the term of art that we use in the security industry is, it's all hazards. We plan for everything. We plan for the bad guy, we plan for the Martians landing in centerfield. We plan for the inclement weather, the snowstorm, the rain. And we build it into a plan, and the purpose of the plan is, the reason why it's a best practice is because it's scalable and flexible. We can adapt, we can modify. We understand the strengths, weaknesses, capabilities, and resources of our local police department, local fire department, medical, and we can surge and address that. So the idea is that you don't pigeon yourself all into, and it, because we could, this group is pretty intelligent. I can tell already. We could probably get into 25 different hypotheticals that take us off course. The idea from the best practice is a homeland security is, you plan for everything. And that's what we do with our schools, that's what we do at universities, that's what we do with government buildings, that's what we do with Fortune 100 companies. And the idea here is, you know, it's not one specific threat. You build a foundation, a, 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 a security program and a compliance culture that can be ready to be resilient for just about anything, man-made or natural. Does that help?
No.
Hi, Karen Spiewak, 90 Oscar Road. Want to make it clear, I am a selectman, but at tonight, I am speaking as a resident. And I'd like to ask the question a little differently. I appreciate you being here tonight and answering these questions regarding, and you just mentioned though, you're in the field, so you must have data points. So I would ask you, what happens more frequently? Is it robberies in the neighborhood, people trying to break into the facility? You have to be basing your best practices on data points, though. I mean, I know you gotta prepare for anything and everything, and I appreciate that, really. But what's, what's the norm out there? What's, if you had to...
Totally.
Comparing apples to apples?
Yeah, so...
Or Colorado, yeah.
Yeah, perfect. So generally speaking, Massachusetts, and this is kind of, this is kind of known out there. We haven't seen any problems. You know, we haven't seen anybody, you know, come in, there hasn't been a gunpoint stick-up, there hasn't been a problem with that, so there's, there's really no data points out there. That's not to say that, you know, places aren't prepared for it, and we should be worried about that. But comparatively speaking, when we look at the more mature industry states like Colorado, California, Las Vegas, you will see that. You will see, you know, data points on armed assault, or armed robbery, or break-ins. And, you know, but I would, I would, I would say perspective and balance here, right? No, no more so than you would see at a jewelry store, a bank, or a CVS pharmacy. So it's very interesting, because you, you try and anticipate what those best practices are to address them. And they're very similar across the board. So overall, Massachusetts is quiet, it's really safe, it's highly regulated. Law enforcement is, you know, aware and has, for the most part, what I've seen and observed out in the field is a really good working relationship with their host community. So I describe it as proactive. But definitively, like I said before, that's not to say something couldn't happen, something couldn't change. It's a very nascent industry, so the data points, to be honest with you, I compare, this is just my opinion, not VGG. Colorado and California are like the Wild, Wild West. We don't want to be like them. As a matter of fact, I, I can't stand those states simply because they're out of compliance. That's just my personal thing. That's why I want to work to build a best practice here in Massachusetts with, with, here in Charlton. So it's kind of the standard routine stuff that you would see across any industry. Nothing, nothing egregious.
One more question, Madam Chair, please, the chair. Could you tell me if there will be armed guards to patrol the area for 24/7? Because I've passed facilities that I've seen that, so just...
That is the best question. I am so happy you answered that. Let me tell you my opinion. Nobody except sworn law enforcement, meaning only sworn police officers, Charlton Police, should be carrying a gun. There will be no guns at this facility. It is the worst possible idea. Only person I want to see having a gun is the chief of police and Charlton Police officers, period, full stop.
Is that what they do in Colorado, or in the Wild, Wild West? Or is it, do they, you're talking to some of the points. But this is a product, you mentioned jewelry stores and banks and things, but this, this is a product that can be sold in the under, in the underground market. So there is, there is, there is, I would guess the reason that you might have a problem in Colorado is people might be breaking into these places and, and they have an underground market to sell it at. It's a different, you're right. I, I've never seen it in Massachusetts, but could it happen? I, I've never seen it in Massachusetts, but could it happen?
I'm sorry, we're just confirming, it's a great question. I'm, I'm all over the place, but the gist of what I heard was like, you know, is there an under-market? Is there this, is there that? Yeah, of course. Like, you know, there's also an OxyContin market and, you know, there's always the potential for what, what is the key term? And this is where I think, you know, our expertise hopefully can give some people a serve is diversion, okay? So within diversion, it basically means, you know, the possibility of the product slipping out and going into the market or getting into the hands of kids or getting in the hands of people who aren't registered and licensed and patients and like, that's what we worry about. So my partner earlier in terms of our expertise in this plan is, and I think this is part of the reason why DPH likes us, is we took our law enforcement experience and my partner was also the chief inspector for DEA. He wrote the book on diversion. Most people come in and they've got scene-of-sale tracking and that's like pretty good and they get some computers that monitor like, is this slipping out or are we missing something? And then involves cash and product, because that's the two things you want to always take a look at. We've got an 18-point plan that was reviewed by six different states and because we literally wrote the book on it, you know, with our former federal experience, like it's one of the best practices in the country. So in addition to all the technology, in addition to all the compliance regulations for the state, within our plan, and we'll share that with law enforcement, of course, and coordinate with their detectives, coordinate with their dare officers, coordinate with their SRO, show them exactly how we intend to implement that programmatically. So like, it's one thing to say like, computer's going to watch this. It's better to build a safety culture around that. And, you know, again, we drew from the best experience to basically say, we know diversion really well. Like, we did it nationally. We've implemented it. We've, we've seen it in practice in some of those wild west places that, you know, otherwise had programs that were out of control. So the whole idea is to be proactive about it, but it starts with the security program itself.
Yes, John Smith, Tresser Hill Road. You talked about reportable incidents from the past. What, what would raise that? What would be the type of reportable incident, the threshold for that?
Want me to keep going?
Sure, we'll go a little bit longer. We have one, we have plenty of money, so we don't.
First of all, I just want to say, this guy's wearing a Boston College sweater, so I love him already and his question's excellent. Second, thank you for all the thoughtful questions so far. I'll keep going all night, folks. They can adjourn, the board can go, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Here's the threshold. Anything that's, if we, if we stand up and we say we're going to have a genuine partnership with the police department and law enforcement, any incident that, you know, rises to the level of precursor warning or indicator for law enforcement, we want to have total transparency with it and make a phone call. I always encourage business enterprises, it's, it's sometimes the little things that you want to be proactive on because it can lead to something else. If it's surveillance, if it's somebody, you know, out in the parking lot, if it's a traffic concern, and we talk with people who are part of the first responder community so we can have proactive transparency. So, you know, if, if it's a slip, like a slip and fall, there's an incident report on it, but it's also something traffic management, like I said, is a good one. Somebody is surveilling your parking lot or something like that. The idea is to have an open and transparent dialogue with the police department. So there might not be a formal 20-page report on that, but enough to pick up the phone call and say, chief, do you guys have any concerns about this? Is this a pattern? Are you seeing something of that? So a lot, as often and as frequently as you can with reporting. That's, that's, that's our standard.
We'll do one more on security and we still have, I'll do one more on security.
Hi, Noreen Smith, Tresser Hill Road. I just had a question, because it hasn't been mentioned, but are dogs used at these facilities for security?
No dogs. No dogs. Dogs are used by like, I'm sorry, I, I, that's a good one because there's always like this concern, like, you know, are they using this, are they using that? No dogs, no weapons. Dogs are usually just used for, you know, other things. Yeah, like, yeah, yeah, but not, nothing like that, no.
Drones?
Drones? That's a good one. That's a great one.
No information on it in the facilities already.
Uh, no, we do not intend to use drones. Chief, is there a no-fly zone in Charlton too?
Yeah, we, yeah, there won't be, it's all regulated now by the FAA.
Yeah.
You need to file a flight plan because of the sound of the chair. Listen, we're, we're on this. I'm on this. I'm telling everybody, we're, we're on this safety and security thing, okay? We're on this.
Just because we have a lot to get through in a very short time period, I'm going, we're going to move on to lighting.
Yes, I'd like to introduce, if I could, Mike Barry.
Can I, can I just stop for a second? Mike, do you want to go through yours? Do you want to do that first and so you don't have to sit there unless you, you want to sit here?
As long as you need, you want to be pleased with it, that's fine.
Can I, can I, so, so both with Ryan and with Mr. Barry, they both came in from a distance and we're hoping that there are two people that might not need to come back. If we could do Mr. Barry and then we were going to do landscaping, but we could transition to graves before we do landscaping if Mike has a time. Okay, so I'm going to kick it back to Dan because that's what he was.
Try to be reasonable about this.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yep.
My name's Mike Barry, just to keep it simple, another Mike in the room. I work for Musco Lighting. We, our company's been around for a little over four years, based out of Iowa. I've been working for Musco for a little over 12 years. I cover the New England market. We work with several of these folks on some other projects and they asked me to get involved in this one to look at the exterior lighting, entranceway and then the road around the facility in terms of lighting design. We look at a couple of different things when we do a lighting design. We look at the target area, where we need to locate poles, ideal mounting heights and then trying to minimize the impact to the surrounding area while also trying to illuminate the targeted area. What we chose for this project is 25-foot poles, your standard kind of soft square parking lot type pole and an OSQ fixture, which is a shoebox type style fixture that aims the, the lighting straight down. IDA compliant. Again, 25-foot poles, we have 61 poles and 65 fixtures. Some of the poles have front and back fixtures on depending on the area, like the loading dock area, we've got a couple with, with front and back mounted fixtures. What we do with those fixtures is we are going to aim those or line those on the perimeter, aiming in towards the building so that we are minimizing the light trespass off the backside of the property and targeting everything in towards the building. We targeted a average of two-foot candles from the entranceway up and around the perimeter. What we looked at with that many poles is making sure that we had no gaps in between the poles from darkness. Everything is kind of a uniform light distribution throughout. We would also add back visors on the back of the fixtures and flanges to minimize the visible lighting from the diodes themselves. So again, everything is targeted in towards the facility. The different NEMA types that will be used will dictate how far we're trying to throw the light from that pole location. So some of them where we're just trying to eliminate that, that access road and just light it to the base of the building and some of them we have a larger area like a parking lot where we want to throw the light a bit further in between poles. We warranty the product for 10 years, means Musco maintains it. We don't do monitoring with this stuff, but what it does allow is controls, which allows the group to set when the lights are on, when they're off, function of the lights, how many poles, how many fixtures. We haven't got into exactly how the zoning will set up, meaning what areas are going to be lit at what times and things like that, but that is the, the design. I think everybody has the design in front of them, if not, I think at one point everybody submitted that, right?
Photometric.
Yeah, photometric plan. In terms of questions, anything like that in regards to the lighting, certainly shoot at me, let me know what it is that you had for questions on it. The total mounting height again is 25 feet, so we'd have about three feet of exposed concrete for if anybody backs into it and then the pole would go from there up.
So I, I think.
Be 25 total.
I think everybody's biggest concern is, is how much visible light is going to be from the neighborhood.
Sure.
Is it going to look like Walmart as you're driving by and is there going to be that glow in the sky? But, you know, how come the curtains, the, anything else?
Yes.
It's the lighting. You've got enough, have enough lighting for security. At what point is that too much and what are the neighbors going to say?
Yeah, and again, targeted two-foot candles, which is what you would see in any other street, pathway, entranceway. It's nothing excessive on the design. It's more or less just limiting the, the entranceways and the, and the road around so that it's visible for security purposes and for travel around the building.
Sure, but there's, there's 65 fixtures there, there's got to be some spillover into the neighborhood.
Well, the photometric report, if you look at it, I mean, it's not far beyond the edge of that fence line that you're at point one foot candles, which is decimal, you can't even read a meter at point one. So visibly you're looking at it, you're going to see two-foot candles and you're going to see darkness. The real impact is if you stare into a light, you're going to see glare. If you're looking, trying to look into that fixture, you could see some light, but you're not going to have trespass into your, your yard. I mean, it goes literally 20, 30 feet beyond that edge where you're actually measurable, if you can even see your meter, beyond that, you're at zero-foot candles. So that's that measurable trespass light. The glare is a different thing and that's why we put in things like those back visors so that, again, when you're looking at the back of that fixture, you're seeing this black visor, you're not seeing the actual diode, which is what creates that glare. And then the flanges, again, allows that LED light to recess inside that fixture a little bit more. Driving around town, you see some of the fixtures where that, those diodes are protruding below that fixture and that's when you're seeing that glare. Where everything is inside of that, you don't have that visible glare.
Any more questions on the board? All right, so we'll take questions on lighting.
Hi, Christine Bro, Prenia Road. We are at 860 feet high on Beacon Hill and what are we going to see? We see, right now, I'll tell you what we see. We see the Milky Way. We going to lose the Milky Way?
No, the purpose of me pointing out that these are IDA compliant, meaning that international dark sky, if you're not familiar with it, is, is an association that looks at different fixtures to try and minimize and they approve fixtures that don't impact the night sky. And this fixture being horizontally mounted so that everything is aimed down, you don't have that ambient light glow that you are thinking that you would have. So what you would see if you're elevated above this complex is you would see illuminated roadways, but if you're above, then you're not going to see that source of light. You're even seeing less other than just the illuminated access road. But it's not going to impact your visible Milky Way.
So when I look off the deck over the tree line, deciduous trees, from that, we're about 800 feet from your property, the, the property, the, the property you represent.
All right, yep.
Are we going to see a spaceship?
No, the purpose of, I mean, if you look elevated and, what is that, overly complex overlook or whatnot, I mean, that, you're, you're above that, you're not seeing this hole illuminated, you're seeing kind of, those lights are aimed to light that entranceway. It's that same idea. You're not, these fixtures are not aimed up where you're getting any of that ambient, which is what creates that glow. These fixtures are horizontally mounted and that's why they are compliant with IDA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Margaret Russell, Olvestar Road. What about the houses that are below the grade? This is up on a hill, you've got 25 feet I aimed down. Most of us, I think, are below the hill.
Yeah, and the same concept in terms, that's why we're talking about where we position the poles. We could have put them at the building aimed out to the perimeter. Instead, we put them on the fence line aimed in towards the building so that you're not in a direct line of sight of those poles. The other thing we're doing is putting those back visors on it to cover that backside of that diode, which is what you would see. Can you make a pole disappear and say we're lighting this roadway without seeing how it's lit? No, but if you look at any light outside, if you want to look into the light, you can find a way to look into the light. What we're saying is that these are directionally aimed, we do everything we can to just target that entranceway and that pathway and that's as far as this light goes. Two-foot candles is pretty minimal.
And are these 30 feet apart? That was the original?
They are, I believe, a little bit further than that. I mean, that's, when you look at a 25-foot mounting height, that kind of dictates how far apart we can space them without having gaps of darkness in between them. For the taller pole, you can space them out a little bit more, but, and they're a taller pole. So it's all relative in terms of how tall the poles are, how far we can space them around, around the property.
Have you done any of these type of lights, projects around here that we can go see?
Yeah, I mean, parking lots, if I could send you some, send through the group, some different locations you could look at, certainly.
Okay, that'll be great, thank you.
Yep.
I am concerned, 59 Olvestar Road, I'm directly across, my bedrooms are on the second floor. I've been blessed to have an apple orchard. Sometimes don't have to pull a shade to have curtains. What am I going to have to do now? I need blackout curtains?
No, yeah, it's, it's minimal light.
I'm not likely to believe. I feel like, I agree with this lady, feel like it's going to be a spaceship on top of a building.
The lighting that's designed is, it's directional, straight down, that's designed to light the parking lot and the entranceway.
I'd like to solve that, sorry.
I'm sorry, excuse me. You said it's designed to light the parking lot and the entranceway, is it not designed to the perimeter?
It does, yeah. The perimeter as well, access road.
Ken Howard, Olvestar Road. Would you feel in the winter time when the snow on the ground is white, that the neighbors are going to see this place a lot more with the reflection of the light? I know from my house I'm down the other end, but I can see the glow from the APATH with the new LED lights. They're all in square boxes, lighting it straight down.
Yeah, I mean, these are, I don't know what those fixtures are there and how they're designed and if you look at them and tell you the differences. The color temperature on these is a 3000K, which is the lower warmer, not the bright white lighting. Snow is a reflective. If it's an area that's not plowed, you would get some reflectance off that. I assume the idea would be plow the paved areas. But again, beyond that, the areas that aren't, aren't plowed, the lights are not going to be aimed at that area. Naturally, any light reflects off a white surface.
Manager, Jerry Russell, Olvestar Road. My question is the, the duration of the lighting, will it be from sunset to sunrise or what's the timeframe?
That is not dictated by me, but if anybody else wants that.
So I think we would look at several different things. I think for security, we would have to comply with security requirements, which do require lighting on site throughout the evening, but we would not utilize all of the lighting at night. So we look at the parking lots, we look at the entryways and we look at the perimeter. So an example of, as we work through the hours, we would generally look to keep the driveway and the parking lot lights on for, you know, roughly 30 minutes after closing to give people the opportunity to leave. And then at that time, we would probably shut off the parking lot, the driveway and probably half of the perimeter lights. And then what you might have left and Ryan would help us design is, is maybe you'd keep a light on at the guard shack, you know, maybe at a doorway. So you, it would just be to maintain a minimum requirements for security purposes.
I had a follow-up question. Dr. Goldstein told me that he was considering using sensor lighting so these lights wouldn't have to be on all the time. Is that in the plan?
In this, in this area, sensor lighting wouldn't work because of natural wildlife. You'd have lights going on and off all night long. I, I'd also, I don't know from a security perspective whether that's a model.
So it's just the state requires that you can have lighting. And then what I would do is, to be honest with you, I'd go back to the fire chief and the police chief because God forbid they got to go up there and in the middle of the night in December when it's icy and it's snow, I'm worried about officer safety, firefighter safety. So like, I think the balance is we'll meet compliance, but I also want first responders adequately safe and protected. So we'll strike that balance, but it's not going to be Yankee Stadium, that's for sure. And we'll have enough, and I can't disclose this obviously, but we'll have enough countermeasures in there to still be compliant and then have good, more than adequate security in there because it's, again, it's one of the, one of the several countermeasures, but it's
But it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a stadium. It's, it's, it's a combination of, don't, the sensors aren't gonna be an option, they just don't make sense. They don't work.
You might wanna talk to Dr. Goldstein then.
Yeah, I did, I did. And like, you know, and, but I mean, I'd, again, I'd go back to the fire chief and the police chief and be like, "Hey, what do we need for officer safety if you gotta go up there in the dark of winter?"
One last question regarding the Cannabis Control Commission. Do they have minimum requirements? Are you meeting the minimum or above it, or what? I'm just curious, so your plan regarding how it affects or would comply with the Cannabis Control Commission?
The lighting?
Lighting, correct, lighting. Does the commission have set standards for lighting?
Yeah, it's the same, it's basically the same as DPH, so yeah, we're, we're gonna be compliant on lights, yeah. They haven't changed so much.
Yeah, this is, this is more for the, for the lighting guy, I'm sorry.
Mike, Tom and Dan.
All right, no problem, all right, got it. So, and, and the question popped up in my head, between fall and summer, when you're, when the lights are shining down onto a parking lot or onto a green grass, do you have a facility where it's shining down onto a billion-square-foot glass roof facility? And how that reflects?
No, and, and, we talked about this earlier, and that, that gets to that, the NEMA types that we use, and how far you're spreading that beam. So we are looking at putting the poles around the perimeter and lighting the access road up and around the parking lot. We're not looking to...
But glass does reflect light, though.
These, you could set that beam spread to eight, 10 feet, and cut it off at the edge of that building. As we know, the building itself is not glass from ground to ceiling, there is, there is an area that, I think 10, 12 feet, we said that it's not. So...
Six.
The, the light itself is just gonna be targeted to light that access road, not reflect off the building. Again, it's, it's down, it's not aimed up horizontally, so you're gonna get that reflectance.
Okay. Ed Cox, 47 Hanson Road. Are there gonna be lights on the cooling towers and on the smokestack? 'Cause that, that, that's one of the things that all the neighbors will see from a distance, 'cause obviously they're much higher and kinda unsightly, you know what I mean? So is that part of this, this lighting plan, or is that a different lighting plan?
Not my light.
Not your lighting?
Nope.
Okay. So, so we're gonna have, you know, 'cause I think, I hear some of the neighbors' concerns about looking up, that they're usually looking at the stars, and now they're gonna be looking at lights. The one thing that in my mind's gonna stand out is towers.